Uh, no, no. If I drink water, I'll have to spend the whole meeting out there. Some of you folks already know that. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for coming in this morning. I've seen some of the same faces again. And regardless of your view of the situation, we applaud you for your involvement. And every one of you realizes city government and cities work best when all the citizens are involved, pro or con, yea or nay, the more citizens that are involved, better for everyone. And I applaud you, who I've seen all, every day, giving up your time to watch us. Thank you. I applaud the media for covering this. It's nice that some folks can't be here, and then they can get some sort of coverage of their city government and their citizens at work through the local media. And to the local media, I thank you for that. The lady that's doing the videoing, this is something new. This is modern technology. Uh, I think that's marvelous. It's not my gig, but I think it's great. I've heard people already watching and are involved because of what you've done. So, media, citizens, thank you. Editorializing, it'd be great if we could all rally around something together that almost agree on. It'd be great for 20,000 citizens on one mission, and I'm sure those missions are ahead of us. My name is Mr. Frank Prince Jr. To my right and your left is Superior Court Judge Grant Meyer. To my left and to your right is Mrs. Danette Rutton. This is our fourth and final time in front of you, our fellow citizens. We're now approaching seven weeks of this process, and we are done. We are done. When we first started this, seven weeks ago, the Port Angeles City Council asked us to volunteer. The three of us went and we said yes. We took on the challenge, and I feel great pride in having finished the challenge. We take great pride in that. This has never been done before. This is the first ethics committee in the city of Port Angeles. This is the first ethics investigation in the city of Port Angeles. We took it from the start to the finish with nothing to guide us, nothing to guide us, but a few documents and a cooperation that the three of us fought amongst ourselves. Hopefully, the other committees that are supporting me, I have two wishes, that they'll have easier time, and then when Committee Number Four is done, that Mrs. Rutton is also serving on, that'll be the last ethics committee we'll ever need. That would be great. That would be great. Our first session with you lasted three hours by our choice. We sat here and you spoke for three hours. We took your questions. We had an open discussion, and we tried to gather as many facts and opinions as we could. We sat here for three hours and we never left. We have copious notes on everything. Second session was right here in front of you folks. We sat right over here and watched a movie for two and a half hours, and we never moved. Two and a half hours, nonstop, and we took copious notes. And when I clearly understood, we didn't just sit there and write down how long each person spoke. We did a heck of a lot more than that. We wrote down what they said, how they said it, who reacted to whom, blah, blah, blah. It wasn't just a timestamp. We took copious notes. That was followed by a 30-minute work session, the three of us. We then met again with you folks for three straight hours of testimony, underspawned testimony, in front of you folks. And we have documents, ones that we didn't go through, seven weeks of work. And then deliberated in isolation, and I don't know where some people get these crazy rumors, we deliberated for four hours, four hours behind closed doors, in isolation. There wasn't a soul around. You know, you hear all these conspiracy theories. This committee did not kill Kennedy, I assure you. And nobody stuck their face in during deliberations. We didn't see a soul, and that's the way it was supposed to be, and that's the way it I must say, committed, to tell you what an honor it has been to serve the citizens of Port Angeles at the request of the city council, but there was a bigger honor. I had a chance to work with Danette and Grant, two of the finest citizens that this city has in its jurisdiction. Mrs. Rutton's common sense approach to problems kept me, a crazy idiot New Yorker, from going off the deep end. Common sense approach. Maybe it's just too lacking in our lives today. It's probably too lacking. Danette, I can't thank you enough for keeping me from jumping off the bus by the State Patrol Office. Thank you. I got close, why didn't I get close? And to my right and your left is one of the smartest men I've met. Laser-focused, meticulous, doesn't get distracted, looks straight ahead, pauses, looks me in the eye, doesn't like what he sees, goes back to the paperwork. Laser-focused Judge Grant Meyer. And during our deliberations, we're going every which way, Danette and I would look up. Grant would just wait, and he would look at us, and he would have the answer. He'd have the direction. I just cannot tell you how much I admire working with Grant Meyer. A thrill. I wish we could have done it under the circumstances. Grant, the city of Port Angeles and myself will always be indebted to you. Upper right, upper right, to your left is young lady mayor Jennifer. She's a city clerk. This committee operated in really, really good fashion for one reason. Ms. Jennifer's professionalism and support, no matter what we needed, when we needed it, over a seven-week period, there she was, Bing Bang Boom. Yes, Mr. Prince. Here it is. Yes, Mr. Prince, I got it. Yes, Mr. Prince, I'll get it. Mayor Downey, when you were promoted at a real city council meeting, your city clerk deserves a round of applause. This doesn't happen without her. All right, sir? I thank you. When we're all done today, uh, city attorney Mr. Moore is vice statute. This was our final. Vice statute, or four minutes, I guess the word is, he will draft, uh, the faxes that we, as we determine them. Today ends it. For all intents and purposes, we're done today. There's some paperwork next week, but we're done today. We are here today to vote for the very first and only time on an ethics complaint, following Mrs. Smith against Deputy Mayor Kidd for the city council meeting that occurred on June February 016. Mrs. Smith could not be with us today. And she was very gracious. She said, "Listen, I want to be there, but I'm out of town already, and I know your schedules are rigid to an extent." And she was gracious. She said, "If you just go ahead and meet, don't worry about me being there." We did not want to overlap with Number Two Committee that started yesterday, and I will address that. I appreciate that from Mrs. Smith. Ms. Jennifer, we'll need your help on this. Committee Number Two, who met preliminarily yesterday, has decided, and I think they made the right choice. Whatever this committee decides today will be stricken from their complaint. Mr. Milliaka, I thought summed it up very nicely yesterday, and they made the motion, and it passed. And I'll power praise. He said, "You let Mr. Prince's group make their choice, and then we'll pick up whatever's left over." I thought that was sound judgment. Sounded like Danette Rutton. Common sense approach to a problem. A common sense approach to a problem. So, when you today will be stricken from Number Two, I think that's a common sense approach. And I'll need your help, Ms. Jennifer, in that we give them precisely what we're doing today so they don't duplicate it, okay? In front of me are all the documents that have consumed our life for the last seven To make things fast and easy today and efficient, other than comments by the committee during the vote, I'm just going to run through these for you briefly. Mrs. Smith broke her complaint into two parts. She put three allegations in Part One, one allegation in Part Two. After the long deliberation amongst the three of us, we realized, Number Two, which only has one allegation, is kind of its own little complaint. It stands on its own merits. It's actually duplicated in Part One. Well, we're not going to be redundant. We're not going to rule twice on the same issue. So, we took Part One, one part of Part One, and just eliminated it, because it's right here in Part Two. And that's what Part Two is all about. So, we say yes here, we have to say yes here. We don't need to say yes twice. We'll say yes or no once, and once only. So, I'll make sure Ms. Jennifer understands that this part of Part One is dismissed, and Mr. Yuckers' group won't need to consider it. Mrs. Smith then submitted six basic supporting documents, or arguments, or statements to support her allegations. Again, by the procedures, we need to quickly tell you what we thought of them, and to be brief, and I'll go right in order, one through six. Now, Danette and Grant, if I skip a part before I go to the next one, just jump in, okay? Otherwise, we'll be very inefficient. Signs restrictions. This committee is sick of hearing about signs. We don't want to hear about it anymore. Is there an ordinance? No. Is there a yes? Can they do it? No. Can they do it? Yes. Have they done it? No. Have they done it? Yes. Figure it out. I ask you, mayor, put this to rest. Put this to rest. Get the signs out of the council chambers, put it in the ordinance, get the signs off the committee members or council members wearing the signs, get it out of here. We don't want to deal with it anymore, and we're not going to deal with it. He said, she said, you did, I did, tit for tat. We're not considering this. Next statement, although it's here. Everything I tell you is here, within the deliberations, but some had more muscle than others. Claiming words and actions were prohibited could only be construed as an attempt to inhibit free speech. We saw none of that, basically, in the video or during testimony. People came up and did what they wanted. We moved on. It's here, it's not here. Violent the rules and procedures customary, that hit home. Some of that hit home. Some of that hit home. Ignoring the council, we're going to discuss that. We're going to discuss that. Some of that hit home. Some of that hit home. Supporting documents for Part Two. Roberts Rules of Order. If you were not here yesterday, listen to Judge Williams, you missed a very nice statement. Judge Williams said, "You know, you want to get something done, don't use Roberts Rules of Order." By document, by ordinance, Roberts Rules of Orders are optional for this city council. The city council operates, and Judge Meyer will elaborate. Limited public forum. Roberts Rules of Order are a suggestion. And I thought Judge Williams yesterday, interesting. You want to get moving? You want to get things done? Don't waste your time. The next one, we were very lockstep on this one. Supporting documentation on this one, we were in lockstep. Being rude to another council member and not letting that council member speak. That council member can speak for himself. That council member can speak for himself. It says right here, following your own document, if a council member's out of order, right here, it tells the council how to do it. If the chair, who is Mrs. Kidd, is out of order, tells her right here how to do it. We read it to ourselves. It's as clear as night and day. If they don't want to do it, we're not doing it for them. They're big boys and girls, they can clean up their own yard. So, we just basically eliminated that one. We're not going to be the police of the city council, they can police their own area. Finally, the last one, now Mrs. Smith wrote. This one hit home. This one got our attention. This one consumed our deliberations. The ending of the second comment period, where Mr. Flood was speaking, the adjournment of the meeting while Mr. Flood was speaking, or he left the stage, and the crowd got unruly, with seven speakers still going, this one got our attention. And it consumed a fair portion of our deliberation. We found that to be compelling, I think is the correct term. And when we get to our vote, I know our judge here, with his knowledge, has information that will be beneficial for everyone, that will certainly be beneficial for us. So, there you go. Six supporting segments. Two or three fairly irrelevant, they're in our heads. One or two, we're just tossing them. Two or three really hit home and made an impact on us, and significantly affected our I want to compliment Mrs. Kidd. This piece of work is unbelievable. This was her response to the complaint. It made our work not any easier, but more organized, more focused, and more honest. I want to thank Ms. Jennifer. All these documents came from her. We've been reading at home every night. Next time there's an opening on Supreme Court, Grant Meyer's my guy. I want to thank Mrs. Smith. All these documents came from her. We've been reading them at home every night. But now we're done. Now we're done. When we're all finished here, the three of us are going to take a two-minute break. I'll need to tell you how it's going to work. We're going to take a two-minute break. Mrs. Rutton will not speak to anyone. She's on Committee Number Four, and she has such integrity, she doesn't want to say anything to anyone, or anyone saying anything to her that might influence her, because she's the lucky candidate that participates on two committees. So, she will not speak to anyone. After a two-minute break, Judge Meyer and I will return, speak to the media if they wish, answer a question or two, that's fine, but we want to give Mrs. Rutton the opportunity to say goodbye to us and not influence her. Her integrity is unquestioned and will remain so. Am I left? Want to sit in, Grant, or am I doing okay?
I think you're doing fine, and this would be an opportunity for me to say thank you to you for your leadership and for your common sense as well, in your dealing with these very difficult matters. And I'm glad that I nominated you for chair. I think you've done a great job, and I thank you for that. I have nothing else.
Nominated was the wrong verb. Corral. Force. Mrs. Rutton, please.
I want to say thank you to both of you. It's been an honor to work with you both. I've known both of you for a long time, in different capacities, but I certainly have to really know you this time. So, it's been a real honor to thank you both.
As I said to you, all of you, very recently, some of you will be very happy how we vote, some of you will not be. We accept that. I think everyone, though, would acknowledge, we have been thorough, we have taken our time, we have not rushed this. The very first day we met with you, seven weeks ago, the first question that came out was, "Mr. Prince, how long is this going to take?" I looked at Grant, I looked at Danette, "It'll take as long as it takes. It'll take as long as it takes." We have been thorough, we have been complete, and I think we've been in motion. Citizens Ethics Committee now, for the first and only time, will vote on the allegations presented to us by Mrs. Smith against Deputy Mayor Kidd for the city council meeting that took place on June February 016. First allegations have already been dismissed. And when you need to cover it, I'll make sure that Committee Number Two deletes it from their packet. As we go through this, each of us will make a brief statement and then vote, or vote and make a brief statement, it's irrelevant. Allegation number one. Public officials shall be framed for abusive conduct, personal charges, and verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other public officials, staff, or the public. I'm going first. I found that to be unfactual. Video, the testimony, my notes, my reading, our deliberations on this one, which is J. 4, Section J, Number 4, Frank Prince Jr. votes no violation. Judge Meyer?
I have really nothing more to say but to agree with you, and I vote no violation.
Mrs. Rutton?
I also vote no violation. I don't believe there was any violation. Diligent research on this, there's no violation.
Or, can I remind you, please, speaking of microphones, when we do this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. By a vote of three zero, charge number one, which is really charge number two, but since one is deleted, charge number one is dismissed by a vote of three to zero, which was J. 4. J. 7 is the next one. Public officials shall not use language or engage in acts that demean, harass, or intimidate another person. We worked on this one, big time. Judge Meyer, again, in his laser-like focus and knowledge, we went to the dictionary, and we defined the words, and then, and only then, we realized how to vote, or how we should vote, or what the deliberations brought out. Public officials shall not use language or engage in acts that demean, harass, or intimidate another person. After consulting the dictionary and deliberating, watching the video, I came to my conclusion. No violation, Frank Prince Jr. votes. Mrs. Rutton, next.
I vote no violation either. I saw the violation as.
Judge Meyer, sir?
I'll just say that we considered particularly the intimidation part of it, and focused on Mr. Flood. And one of the thoughts that we had regarding that is that we looked like Mr. Flood was intimidated, and he probably wouldn't want to be characterized as having been intimidated. I vote no violation.
By a vote of three zero, Citizen Committee One, J. 7, no violation, vote of three to zero, which brings us to our third and final charge. All of this, Mrs. Smith decided to break her complaint into two parts. This one charge is contained in all these documents, and to her credit, she really focused on this part. I'll read you the charge. Public officials shall not engage in any conduct or activities that reflect discredit on the public officials, tend to bring the city into disrepute, or impair its efficient and effective operation. We deliberated for four hours in isolation. I would say 50% of our deliberations focused on this one. We tore it apart. We read the complaints. We reviewed the videos here in our notes. We reviewed the testimony. We took copious, meticulous notes on what happened at that meeting and tried to refer back to it. Judge Meyer has already brought up the key element, and I brought this element up during this one testimony, when Mr. Flood was at the podium. That was not a city council meeting anyone can be proud of. That's not the way city council meetings are supposed to work. That's not the way our government is supposed to work. For whatever reason, Mrs. Kidd was the mayor that night, she was running a meeting. Public officials shall not engage in any conduct or other activities that reflect discredit on the public officials, tend to bring the city into disrepute, or impair its efficient or impair its efficient and effective operation. Frank Prince Jr. votes yes, there was a violation. Mrs. Rutten, please.
I vote yes, there was a violation.
And Judge Minor will be our cleanup hitter here. He has legal research. Judge Minor, your vote, sir, and your reason.
My vote is that there was a violation. As Mr. Prince said, we spent considerable time on this, and I have done some little research regarding this issue and considered that in reaching my decision. And I would like to read what I have managed to write regarding this. So please bear with me. I'd like to read this statement. And the other members of the board have heard this and, I think, approve of it. The meeting was adjourned in this manner. After the conclusion of the council's business, the second public comment period was opened. And a number of persons had signed up to speak, and the first one to the podium was Robert Flood. Several minutes into his oration, Mr. Flood spoke of the Four Horsemen of the Apocalypse and said something to the effect that the Four Horsemen could be named certain members of this city council, including Miss Kidd. Miss Kidd apparently took offense at that illusion as she repeatedly wrapped the gavel and told Mr. Flood that he was out of order, to which he voiced his disagreement. Until this time, the video recording does not reveal noise or any disruption in the audience. But at that point, the audience erupted with boos and other noise. And just let me say, this isn't in the writing, but let me say to this point, the meeting had been, I'm sure, tense and some tension in the air. And Mrs. Flood had to deal with that kind of a meeting where there were very real and distinct feelings, and people were upset. Some people were upset, and some were dealing with that as well. So at that point, after the audience became upset, Mr. Flood finally walked away from the podium. Miss Kidd issued a warning to the audience, and the next speaker, Rowan Richards, stepped to the podium. Miss Kidd then announced that the meeting was adjourned, and after a short time, she exited the chambers. The law does not require a city council to allow the public to speak at its meetings. Doesn't have to do that at all. But if it does so, the council chambers become what the appellate courts have called the chambers, that is, this room becomes what has been called a limited public forum. And the constitutional protections to free speech are activated and apply in that limited public forum. And I think it was in one of those cases dealing with this topic in other settings, of course, that Supreme Court Justice Felix Frankfurter wrote that freedom of speech includes the right to criticize public officials. And that includes not only informed and responsible criticism, but also the freedom to speak foolishly and without moderation. I'm not accusing any particular speaking speaker of speaking foolishly and without moderation. But if one would do that, that's something that we have to sit here and listen to. When criticizing public officials, the public has broad and almost unlimited means of expressing that criticism. And that speech cannot be duly interrupted or curtailed by the officials in a limited public forum. And that was a situation that we had here. We had a limited public forum, which was open to the public to speak. In this study, on February 2nd, however, there could have been other actions taken. And those actions are spelled out as to what the presiding officer can do in the Washington Public Meetings Act. The disruption of a meeting is a legal term of art. And if this meeting was disrupted at the time that Miss Kidd announced the adjournment of the meeting, then the Washington Open Public Meetings Act sets out what can and should be done. If the meeting wasn't disrupted, then of course, we have a little different situation. But let's assume that it was disrupted. The Washington Open Public Meetings Act sets out the actions that can be taken when a meeting is in that state that is disrupted. First of all, the presiding officer can remove those disrupting the meeting. And then, if that doesn't work, the statute spells out that the meeting room can be cleared. Or if the presiding officer chooses, the meeting can be adjourned and reconvened in a different place. However, as Mrs. Kidd was the presiding officer, she took none of these actions prescribed by the Open Public Meetings Act. Instead, she stopped the speaker at the floor and adjourned the meeting with no provision for reconvening and yet another forum. As a result, Mr. Flood was presented from completing his statement that he was in the midst of making, and seven other persons who had signed up to speak to the council were unable to do so. And as Mr. Prince has read, and I'll take the time to repeat it here. Section J of the Ethics Code provides, "Public officials shall not engage in any conduct or activities that reflect discredit on the public officials, tend to bring the city into disrepute, or impair its efficient and effective operation." Well, we're dealing with some words that I said at the opening meeting that were very important and are not defined in the ordinance. So we turn to the dictionary. And this is what we found with regard to definitions of discredit. And that word means loss of confidence, loss of repute or esteem, or disrepute damaging to a good reputation. We also found that disrepute is defined as low regard, disfavor, or disgrace. In my opinion, Miss Kidd's actions in adjourned the meeting violated Section J of the Code of Ethics, the section that I've read to you, in that those actions reflected discredit on the city council and upon Miss Kidd herself as a public official. It tended to bring the city into disrepute, and it impaired the efficient and effective operation of the city council at its meeting on February 2nd, 2016. And therefore, I have voted that there was a violation. And that concludes my remarks.
Judge Williams, Judge Minor, thank you. By a vote of 3-0, Citizens Ethics Committee Number One confirms the violation committed by Deputy Mayor Kidd to Section J. 2 by a vote of 3-0, and it needs to be recorded, Ms. Jennifer. Thank you. A side note. What you just heard from Judge Minor is what we have been with seeing from this gentleman for seven weeks. Knowledge. Clear thinking. Superior guidance. Thank you, Grant. Thank you. Each of us now has a chance to make a very brief closing statement, and we will say goodbye to you folks. Mrs. Rutten?
Again, it's been an honor to work with Judge Minor and Mr. Prince, who both in my lifetime have been real role models for me. But I was born and raised in this community. And I teach ethics at the college. And the definition of ethical behavior is someone who respects the dignity, diversity, and rights of individuals and groups of all people. And that works both ways. That works for the public, our community, and it works for our city council. You can't look at one and not look at the other. But I'm going to say to you that a person or people who are formed without ethics is like a cabin built without nails. No matter how solid the structure appears, it will crumble. And I do believe in what Miss Kidd said in that meeting. We can do better. There is too much going on in our world. Children's death in Pakistan. People dying in Turkey. People dying in Sweden and Brussels. We need to be looking at ourselves. And I'm going to say it just once. I'm not going to say whether I'm advocate or foe. But we have more to look at than just fluoride. And we can do better.
De Neder, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if that's not common sense thinking, which I talked about with Mrs. Rutten, I don't know the term. That's as common sense as I've ever heard. De Neder, that's marvelous. Thank you. Judge Minor, closing comment?
I'll always say that I appreciate having worked with both of you, and I thank you for your service. And it was my pleasure to engage in a very difficult task. This was not easy. And I think that Miss Kidd has a very long record of good and faithful service to this city. And that this is something that she should push through and continue that service and dedication to the city. I am pleased to have served, and I thank you all for being in attendance and giving us your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. My closing statement is personal. And I'll try to get through it. I have never known, I know a more dedicated public servant than Sherri Kidd. We open a restaurant, there she is. A new store, a new shop, there she is. The ferry comes in, there she is. Cruise ship, there she is, got the red cone on. We got to go to Victoria, work on tourism, there she is. Every time you turn around, there she is, doing something for the city of Los Angeles. And she did something very special that hits home right here. My wife teaches at Jefferson Elementary School. They had a big fundraiser. Kids wanted to do a dunk tank. Dunk tanks are great if you throw them to the baseball. It's not that fun if you get dumped. And when it's cold and dirty, and you go down and up, down and up, down and up, and you get very, very tired. And you keep smiling, and you say to yourself, why did I say this? My wife came over for the fundraiser. Oh, boy, did we have great time. Look at the money we raised, the debt. The dunk tank was unbelievable. They said, really? Who was in it? Sherri Kidd. Sherri Kidd. Sherri Kidd. My respect for her has not diminished one iota. But we give her the charge, the three of us. We volunteered to do our civic duty. And we did it. We take ownership. We take ownership. Ladies and gentlemen, Ethics Committee Number One has completed its work to you, the citizens and the city of Los Angeles. May God bless you all. We are returned.